Good evening, councillors, ladies and gentlemen. Please be upstanding for the mayors of City and Parks.
Well, hello and welcome all. And before proceeding, I pay my respects to the Murrimina people as the traditional and original custodians of the lands on which we meet, and I acknowledge the continuing connection of the Tasmanian Aboriginal people to the skies, land and waterways. I pay respect to elders past and present. Before we commence with tonight's council meeting, please let us all pause for a quiet moment of reflection and respect. Thank you, councillors. Ladies and gentlemen, please be seated. Well, good evening and welcome to the Clarence City Council Meeting of Monday, the 24th of February 2025. This meeting is being broadcast live on YouTube, and what is said in this meeting this evening is not protected by privilege, and there is link to the agenda papers on the council's website. I note that the CEO, Mr Nelson, is on leave, and Mr Ross Graham is acting CEO. So, welcome to the hot seat, Mr Graham. Item number two is apologies, and the Deputy Mayor, councillor Ritchie, as well as councillor Kennedy, are both apologies this evening, otherwise the other ten of us are here. Item number three, declarations of interests of councillors or close associates. Are there any declaration from councillors? There being none, we now head into our omnibus items. 4.1, the confirmation of the minutes, that the minutes of the council meeting held on the 3rd of February 2025 have been circulated. Are there any issues arising? There being none, we now move into 4.2, Mayor's Communication. Firstly, I would like to address arrangements related to my candidacy as an independent candidate for the seat of Franklin in the upcoming federal election. As I have said elsewhere, I will continue working hard for the residents and ratepayers of Clarence as mayor during the election period. With assistance from the CEO and other senior council staff, I have developed a conflict management protocol, which I have signed and published on my Facebook page. The protocol clearly sets out how I intend to manage my role as mayor while I also campaign. If any colleagues would like a copy of the protocol, please, as always, let me know. Second item of business is a letter from Mr Brian Chapman of Planning Matters Alliance Tasmania or PMAT. And colleagues, on Saturday afternoon, I received correspondence from Mr Chapman, representing PMAT, regarding the recent public meeting concerning the state government's proposal to reintroduce legislation to establish development assessment panels. And Mr Chapman's letter reads, Dear Mayor Blomley, I wish to formally advise that a public meeting was held on Tuesday, the 18th of February 2025, to discuss the Tasmanian state government's proposal to introduce Development Assessment Panels, or DAPs. This meeting was held at the Rosney Bowls Club with 120 of the public in attendance. I chaired for the host, Planning Matters Alliance Tasmania, which is a network of 70 diverse community groups seeking to protect and advocate for Tasmania's future through better land use planning. There were six speakers at the meeting, who in order of appearance were Sophie Underwood, the State Director of PMAT, Terry Polglies, representing Save Rosney's Parks, Josephine Castillo, representing Rosney Hill Friends Network, Dr Rosie Woodruff, MP, Greens Leader and Franklin Representative, me as a retired recreation consultant, and concluded by Alison Ritchie, Deputy Mayor, representing council. Speakers were followed by question time and the calling for any motions. There were two other Clarence City councillors in attendance, and these were councillors Jade Darko and councillor Richard James. Six other Clarence City councillors provided their apologies prior to the meeting. These were yourself as mayor, as well as councillors Emma Goine, Daniel Hume, Beth Warren, Heather Chong and Wendy Kennedy. Two motions were presented at the meeting, and these were carried unanimously. Motion one was, the meeting requests Clarence City Council to instigate community public meetings to discuss proposed changes to land use planning appeal rights. And the second motion was, the meeting calls upon the Clarence City Council to reject any removal of third-party planning appeals rights. Since the meeting, PMAT has been informed that the state government expects to hear a new DAPs bill by the end of this month, followed by a six-week consultation period. Please also find a letter attached from Luke Edmonds, MLC, which was read at the meeting. And that's from Mr Brian Chapman for PMAT, and a copy of the Honourable Luke Edmonds, MLC, Labor Member for Penbrook, is also attached, so I'll table that and advise that I will respond in due course, and will provide a copy of that response to all colleagues, as is the normal course of events. 4.2.3, diary entries, and they've been circulated from the 4th of February 2025 to today, the 24th of February, with one, sorry, to yesterday, the 24th of February, with one last edition. I was interviewed by seven Tasmanian youths this afternoon about public transport challenges, growing pains of a growing city, and the state government announcement of investment at Clarence High. So they've been circulated from the information of colleagues. As colleagues will note from my diary entries, it was a busy weekend in our city with two standout community events. Last night, at a free community concert, we concluded the 29th Annual Clarence Jazz Festival. Over the four days of the festival, we were treated to an extraordinary lineup, our talented local jazz heroes alongside incredible interstate and international artists, all sharing their passion and craft with us. It was a joy to see the festival, Harbert Rosney Farm buzzing with energy, as well as Simmons Park yesterday afternoon. With strong attendances across the festival, with thousands experiencing the many fantastic events and performances, I would like to take this opportunity to thank Ms Coburn and her amazing team, who work so hard behind the scenes. The standout success of the event is a reflection of the incredible dedication and tireless efforts that the team puts in. The benefits are not only confined to cultural and artistic, but also economic, with the festival generating over $250,000 worth of economic benefit to our city. So on behalf of a grateful city, thank you to all involved. And in fact, in talking last night with both councillor Ritchie and councillor Chong, who were at the events, we can't wait to see what is planned for next year, the 30th festival, but the team have had a few days to recuperate, and I note that Ms Coburn's not here tonight. Oh, she's here, sorry, Ms Coburn, in the back door. But thank you very much. It really was wonderful. The second community event was the 21st Banjo's Shoreline Crown Series Billreve Regatta, hosted by the Billreve Yocla. This regatta is not only a highlight of Tasmania's sailing calendar, but a celebration of our rich maritime history, community spirit and passion for the sport. Now in its 21st year, this regatta continues to grow, firmly establishing itself as Tasmania's largest and most popular keelboat regatta. And if I'm not mistaken, councillor Mulder is one of the many sailors out on the Derwent competing yesterday. This year was particularly special with the inclusion of the inaugural Tasmanian Yachting Championship and the SB20 Australian Championship. So to Commodore Huey Lewis, his flag officers and all the other volunteers, thank you for what was another highly successful and enjoyable regatta. Moving on, 4.3, council workshops, as listed in the agenda. Table 4.4, tabling of petitions. Acting CEO, are there any petitions?
Thank you, Mayor. No, there are no petitions.
Thank you. 4.5, reports from outside bodies. The first have been copying refused disposal site joint authority. Councillor Walker.
We met last week and report to follow.
Thank you. I just asked also if you addressed the chair that you stand as well. Thank you. Councillor Warren, anything on Tas Water South?
Nothing, and you're forgiven for not standing.
Thank you. No, that's quite all right. And I usually would check with you beforehand, so thank you. Tas Water Corporation, I can report the CEO and I attended via Teams Tas Water's half-yearly briefing to shareholders on Wednesday, the 12th of February. As the briefing was confidential, I won't table a copy of the report, however, as always, if any colleague would like to discuss the performance of Tas Water or cite the report or the presentation, please let me know. As you know, my door is always open.
Do you take a question in relation to?
No, we'll take questions at question time, councillor James. Thank you. Greater Hobart Committee, nothing to report here for information. The next Greater Hobart Mayor's Forum is scheduled for Wednesday, the 5th of March. Moving on to reports from council and special committees and other representative bodies, are there any reports for tabling? Councillor Chong, you have the call. Thank you.
Do, thank you, Mr Mayor. Two things, can I table the Richmond Advisory Committee minutes of the 19th of January, which I have already handed to Ms Ellis? And just a verbal report to pass on, following on from your comments about the Jazz Festival, and a number of compliments and comments from the members of the public and the musicians who were involved in the Jazz Festival, and how much they appreciated the fact that we did this, and what a wonderful event it was.
Thank you, councillor Chong. Councillor, no, thank you.
I seek to table the newsletter from the Australian Coastal Councillors Association, Incorporated. Once again, it's a very informative newsletter, with particular reference this time to the to a particular program called Coast SNAP System, is based on a network of camera mounts at beaches, where members of the public are invited to place their camera in a mount, take a photo and upload it to social media using a specific hashtag. The images are then added to the Coast SNAP database, which currently contains more than 150,000 images. Professor Mitchell Harley, a researcher at the University of New South Wales, points out that they have now more than 500 stations worldwide in 34 countries. So sea levels are rising, he says, at different rates around the world, and climate change is changing how storm systems behave. So this network of observations creates an excellent timeline to see what the changes are and the conditions and the erosions. And many of these issues are ones that will bedevil this council and its coastal management arrangements. But as I said, it's an informative letter, and I seek to table it.
Thank you, councillor Mulder. Any other colleagues wishing to table reports? And we'll make sure they're circulated in a normal way. Thank you, as always, Ms Ellis. Moving now to 4.6, the weekly briefing reports. The weekly briefing reports for the 3rd, 10th and 17th of February 2025 have been circulated to councillors. Are there any matters arising? Councillor James.
Beat me to the hot. Thank you. The 3rd of February 2025, the intersection of Beach Road and Melaner Road, Lindisfarne. I look, thank the head of infrastructure and natural assets for providing this briefing report. In the second paragraph, council has $100,000 of funds for a design upgrade of the Beach Road and Melaner Road intersection. A request for quotation document is close to completion for releasing this month. My question is, how close are we in relation to that? And given that the officers have also submitted an application for the 2025-26 Black Spot Programme, do we envisage that these works will be completed within the 24-25, sorry, 25-26 financial year?
Thank you, councillor James. Acting CEO, would you like to have that, or would you like to defer to the acting head of infrastructure and natural assets?
I'll defer.
All right, so Ms Moore, welcome. Wonderful to have you here in Mr Graham's position, but the question is to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I was actually just reviewing the project brief this afternoon, so we have a brief that's nearing finalisation, ready to be put out to consultants for quoting. We have also got a project proposed for inclusion in the 25-26 financial budget for in the roads gathering programme, which will be our contribution towards the Black Spot funding application that will make the state growth. So those two things combined, subject to a successful Black Spot funding application, would mean that the work will be funded for construction in 25-26.
Thank you, Ms Moore. Councillor James, other question?
Yes, thank you. Same weekly briefing report of the 3rd of February. It refers to the planning update in relation to 2042 Scots Road in Riston Vale. In paragraph two, it says, the original timeframe dictated by the EPA for the completion of the application was the 31st of January 2025, which has not been met. Accordingly, EPA has extended the timeframe to the 31st of January 2026. My question, Mr Mayor, is to Mr Maher, in his capacity as head of city planning. Is this unusual, and I know we are talking about a different agency in relation to this, but this matter has been going on for a number of years, and it does seem that EPA is not, well, it just doesn't seem to have taken this timeframe on hand, and it's going to be drawn out a lot longer. And therefore, it would seem that this work, or what the requirements of EPA are, will not be concluded until January 2026.
Thank you, councillor James. I won't refer to Mr Maher, because he's not here, but we'll refer to his acting head of city planning, Miss Robyn Olsen. Thank you, Ms Olsen.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The EPA are within their remit to ask for such extensions, and so therefore, they're operating within their remit.
Anything further, councillor James?
Yes, look, I know the community, and you've been to some of those meetings yourself, Mr Mayor, as well as some of the other colleagues, but I'm not sure if the community are aware of this, and and are we at liberty to either seek EPA to at least contact the residents in that direct vicinity of the works at 2042 Scots Road, to be advised of the extension?
Thank you, councillor James.
To 2026.
Thank you. For the benefit of the general public, we'll read on with the memo provided by Mr Maher, the 6th of February, where he makes the points that the proponents now require to submit a satisfactory environmental effects report by the 31st of March 2025, to facilitate completion of the assessment process by 31 January 2026. In addition, the EPA require the proponents to progress further operational improvements, such as stockpile management, protection of surface waters and dust management. EPA officers will continue to visit the site to assess compliance with the EPN conditions for the duration of the extension. As previously advised, council is unable to progress the application and undertake public exhibition until the EPA is satisfied with the documentation provided in response to their request for further information. Mr Maher says he'll advise when more information is at hand. I appreciate this is very frustrating. We all know firsthand the frustrations of local residents, but we're really in a position, we have to wait for the EPA to do their job first. As to potential communication, I'll take that on notice, but that's something we probably could look at doing. I think that would be a good community service to do. But, as I say, as you'd appreciate, we're really beholden to the EPA and their act and what they do. But we all understand the frustration that you articulate there. Councillor Mulder, please.
Mayor, I noticed in the weekly briefing report issued soon after the 19th of February, I don't have the actual date here, the launch of the We Stand Together Against Racism, a joint council campaign of the sixth greater Hobart councils, and it's a campaign which includes all racism, and it's not selective. And in that regard, I'd like to pay my respects in the thinner. And I deeply regret that Governor and Lady Franklin valued Adolly more than they did her.
Any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? All right, well, I know we're at the end of our omnibus items. Can I have a mover of the omnibus items, please? Thank you, councillor Chong, second and councillor Hunter. All those in favour, please. That's unanimous. Thank you, colleagues. Moving now on to 5.1, which is public questions, public questions on notice. Mr Boran, as listed in the agenda. Acting CEO, if you're able to provide a response, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, there is one question on notice from Mr Boran of Howra, and the question is, when is council going to install a no camping overnight sign at the entrance to the Wentworth Children's Playground gravel car park off Salacia Avenue, Howra? And the answer, council has ordered the new sign and is expected to be installed in the next three to four weeks, pending the production by the sign maker. The sign is intended to improve camping behaviour choices and to act as a deterrent to overnight camping in the car park.
Thank you, acting CEO. 5.3, answers to previous questions taken on notice, as listed in the agenda. 5.4, questions without notice. Are there any questions from the gallery this evening? Mr and Mrs, Mr Marsh, if you could go first, please, then Mrs Marsh and then Mr Fig. Thank you. The usual drill, name and suburb, please.
It's Victor Marsh from the Bluff, Billreve Bluff. Would the council please update the community on the current status of the community awareness campaign and the workshop to discuss elected polls and community meetings?
Thank you for the question. Ms Wick, are you able to provide an answer, please?
Through you, Mayor. The community awareness campaign is nearing the end of its rollout. We're just currently waiting on some visual visual identities, oh yeah, for online. As for workshops, I'm not entirely sure what that's in reference to. I'll have to take that one on notice or provide further information.
Thank you, Ms Wick. So, Mrs Marsh.
Joanne Marsh, Billreve. When I woke up this morning, I didn't have a question, but unfortunately I do now. Today, I witnessed the aftermath of a three-car collision at the Rosney Hill Road Kangaroo Bay Drive intersection. One car mounted the curb onto the footpath after colliding with the traffic light in the same place where large numbers of college students stand waiting to cross. Will council now reconsider advocating for pedestrian safety barriers to be installed?
Mrs Marsh, thank you for your question. We'll take that one on notice. It's a point very well made. And thank you, we will provide a detailed response in the minutes, but it certainly is something that we're all cognizant of. Mr Fig.
Michael Fig, Lauderdale. I don't stand here very often unless I see a problem. And there's a major problem happening in council at the moment, and it's to do with your customer service charter and your webpage. Your customer service charter, it says your purpose is to deliver the best experience in every interaction. Your mission says to respond to the needs of the community. You talk about being accountable, collaborative and authentic. Your commitments state you've been caring, empathetic when speaking to us and understanding our needs. I've recently had a phone call where I spoke to your receptionist and told them I was having a difficulty getting responses and speaking to anyone about the new webpage. When she didn't understand and said I couldn't speak to anyone, she informed me after I told her that this is very frustrating for the community, that we can't get answers, and when we do, it takes so long. For example, the issue that I raised in October 2024 was responded to on Friday, the 10th of the 1st, 2025, at 3:30pm. The response I got was, by design, the new website has not been built to have the capability of document management systems, and is not intended to be a library. As I am one of the researchers, for a number of reasons, either putting in information to the Tasmanian Planning Commission or talking to councillors, I use the website that did exist as a resource for documents.
Mr Fig, excuse me, sir. This is the question time.
And I'm asking a question.
Mr Fig, you know they have to be brief. If you wish to make a deputation, there's an opportunity to have done that. Please get to your question.
Mr Mayor, this is one of the reasons why we're raising these issues, is because of the way we're being treated. This person hung up on me. Now we're being treated here as somebody who needs to follow every rule. In designing the website, the decision was made by council to take the documents off the website and put it somewhere else. I'd like to know why. This option was also considered the most digitally safe, was the excuse. The most cost efficient with the budget available. Now, if you haven't got a budget for us to search things, why are you looking at $15 million to put into this building, either here or another site, yet you won't put it into allowing the community to have access to information?
Mr Fig, I've given, no, Mr Fig, Mr Fig, that's it. Mr Fig, now take your seat, please. You've taken a lot of latitude tonight. Well, Mr Fig, the rules apply equally to everybody in this city, you included, sir. No, no, take your seat, Mr Fig. Mr Fig, no, Mr Fig. No, Mr Fig, you're able to raise them, absolutely. It's public question time, but do it in a way, Mr Fig, do it in a way that aligns with the rules. You are no different from any other citizen in the city. You will not be given special treatment. No one's given special treatment. Let me be very clear about that. We'll take that, Mr Fig, we've discussed this before, you and I personally. I've discussed this with, you contacted me about this earlier this year. Not the most recent example, but you're concerned about the website. So what I will do, I'll have a detailed response in the minutes for you, that'll deal with the particular issue that you raise. I will just remind people, though, that questions are not an opportunity to make a deputation. They need to be brief and to the point. Thank you. Any other questions tonight? Mr Carr? Do you have a question, sir?
But I don't have one.
Thank you, sir. All right. Thank you very much. All right. Well, now we move to item six, deputation. Mr Fig.
Sorry?
This is not an opportunity for you to make noises or make commentary from the public gallery. Thank you. The same rules apply to you as everybody else in the city. Deputations by members of the public. Item number six, Mrs Joanne Marsh of Billreve. Thank you, Mrs Marsh.
Joanne Marsh, Billreve. I wish to share my thoughts about the principles of critical thinking and its relationship to planning, using the example of the free ferry service generously initiated by McConnell Dow between Billreve and Hobart for the Wooden Boat Festival on Sunday, the 9th of February. Critical thinking means asking questions, gathering relevant information, thinking through solutions and conclusions, considering alternative systems of thought and communicating effectively. When council became aware that a generous free ferry service offer had been made, the critical thinking process needed to be activated. the critical thinking process needed to be activated. Questions needed to be asked to gather information. As a local resident, I know that free ferry services to events attract large numbers of people. Consequently, the size of the available vessel and the timing and frequency of the service needed to be carefully considered. A solution needed to be planned to ensure the effectiveness of the service. What were the people who queued on Sunday pretended with? A small ferry, an hourly timetable, a late start and an early finish during daylight savings. Adjustments were quickly made, including the late addition of the Freya, a larger vessel, but were not adequate to solve the problem. The message on council's Facebook page was, each ferry can carry up to 107 passengers per trip, ensuring ample space for everyone wishing to attend the festival. I believe to be wishful thinking by council. The Facebook page began to receive complaints about the excessive wait time. Passengers had been advised to catch a bus when the limited Sunday timetable was in operation. People who had every right to register a complaint on numerous Facebook sites were then treated disrespectfully and rudely by other passengers who were delighted to wait and couldn't see a problem. This escalated when a very nasty letter was printed in the Mercury with the heading Festival Ship Shape. This was debunked by another letter writer who stepped in to confirm that the ferry service was a debacle. Facebook posts described increasing issues at the end of the day. The final ferry timetable for 3.30 left early, filled to capacity and arrived at Belreath at 3.37pm. A long line of passengers unable to board the Freya on the last trip were left to organise other transport back to Belreath. The Clarence City Council needs to take more responsibility for what happens on their patch. Now that the upgrade of Worf has been approved by council, the community needs to be confident that the council will advocate for a ferry service that is fit for purpose. The seventh and final step on the pathway to thinking critically is to reflect and learn from the process. This vital step is required to ensure the success of future doing its ferry services. Thank you.
Mrs Marsh, thank you very much for your deputation. And I think it's important to note that it was a very generous initiative from McConnell Dow that put on that ferry service from 10 till 4, from Belreath to Brook Street Pier and back. We were happy to promote it. In fact, I was talking today with the minister and others about expanding the ferry service. I think we're all in lockstep there. But I think it's worth acknowledging and thanking McConnell Dow, the construction company behind the Bridgewater Bridge, for their very generous contribution towards that free ferry service. A number of people called me that were queuing for some time. That's unfortunate, but I think it just strengthens our case for the state government to step up and deliver more in the way of ferry services. Thank you for your deputation. All right, moving now on to item number seven, planning authority matters, there are none. Moving on to item number eight, reports of officers. 8.1, there are no petitions tabled at previous council meeting. 8.2, 8.2.1, asset management Cambridge Oval Master Plan adoption. There's a recommendation, is there a mover of the recommendation, please? Thank you councillor Mulder, is there a second? Thank you councillor Hunter, councillor Mulder, please.
I think we've been through this a fair bit. And I will congratulate the negotiating skills of our staff in regard to what was rapidly becoming a showdown about where we were expected to build a facility like a gymnasium for 90% used by the school and that they hadn't got grant funding enough to do it. And in our decision, which others will allude to, we had put it quite firmly that we thought that if they wanted to build an oval, if they wanted to build a gymnasium on our land, then they really needed to actually build that gymnasium and we'd be prepared to lease the land to them. In exchange for which, they would demolish a pavilion, which had to go anyway. And we look forward to being able to build that pavilion at the right price, discounted by not having to demolish it. So there are things. My only issue with the plan, which I'm not really happy about, but it's far too late in the day to be making micro adjustments to such a widely consulted plan, is that all the parking is up the front on the road, as well as there's a school parking, which is accessed from there, except for 17 spaces, which are right down the other end, which will mean that cars will be travelling between the two sports grounds in order to access the dog exercise area. And, you know, and it just seems to me that that's a little recipe for disaster. Just today, we got a letter about the conflict at a sports ground at Wentworth Park between pedestrians and vehicles coming in and out of an area that's very frequented. Now, these sports grounds are quite often used by small kids. They don't have that much road sense as we would like them to have. Bearing in mind, I'm not saying all adults have the same amount of road sense. But it just seems to me that we're building a conflict in here that shouldn't exist. So apart from that, you know, which is a personal observation, I don't intend to try to amend the plan on the run. I just make that observation so that perhaps when it comes time to actually building some of this stuff, we might give some second thoughts about whether that is an appropriate way. When people, if it was a pedestrian-only access, you could park up the front of the block, you could leave your car there and you could take your, you could walk or, you know, cycle. Good luck cycling with a dog on the lead, or your personal mobility scooter or whatever it is that you're using. And you could go to the dog park and you could walk your dog. I mean, you are going to walk your dog, exercise your dog in that park anyway. So you're going to have to do some mobility. And this is just symptomatic of the desire of many Tasmanians to be able to park within two, you know, metres of where they want to be. So all I can say is I commend the plan and.
Dilex. Councillor Hunter.
I think councillor Mulder summed it up nicely. I would just like to reiterate the skill of the council officers in negotiating a difficult concept over many months, actually years. And also for keeping councillors so well informed along the journey. I look forward to seeing this project progress.
Thank you councillor Hunter. Any other colleagues wishing to contribute? Councillor James, thank you.
Thank you and thank you to the staff for circulating the Cambridge Primary School Master Plan. And a decision was made in this place on the 10th of September 2018, in which it says, and I quote, "The state government fund the relocation of the existing clubrooms and toilet facilities and the redevelopment of new light facilities on the eastern end of the Oval. Such cost and relocation to be further negotiated between council and the state." Noting that the existing facilities, and this is a really important line in that decision, noting that the existing facilities are to continue in use until replacement facilities are built. Now, in the report that's before us, there's no mention of that council decision on the 10th of September 2019. And I would have thought that it should have been included in there because there are a number of, that decision is still on the books, it hasn't been rescinded. And therefore, this particular final Cambridge Oval Master Plan is making the comment that the current sports pavilion and change room amenities at the Oval will need to be demolished to accommodate the new school gymnasium. And the replacement pavilion at a cost of between 3.5 and 4 million, council will have to seek external funding to cost this particular project. So the decision of 2018 was quite clear that the state government, or the department, well, the state government, would fund the relocation of the existing clubrooms and toilet and the redevelopment of new light facilities on the eastern end. Such cost to be negotiated between council and the government. Now, in this particular instance, there has been note of what council's contribution will be in relation to the, some of these charges that are going to be sought by council. On page 25, council has also budgeted the following capital funds for future implementation of the master plan. And there's nothing in there at all, other than design of internal roads, traffic car parks, design of upgraded sports fields and construction of the Cambridge Offlead Dog Park. So in actual fact, when that building is demolished to make way for the new gymnasium, we have to do a lease, undertake a lease with the government in relation to, if we decide to do that, lease that land for the department or the state government to be able to build the gymnasium on it. And also, once that gymnasium is built, there's no indication that the state government or the Department of Education will foot the bill for the new pavilion at what was proposed in the 2018 decision of this council. The other factor that comes into the mix here is that the gymnasium will be available to the public, but only at certain hours because it has to have, has to be the requirement of the school to be able to have the students and staff to be able to use that for their own purposes, which is fair enough. And the public will not be able to be attending or actually using those premises because of the nature of the gymnasium is primarily being built for the school. So in summary, what we have here is that this is heavily weighted in favour of the Department of DCIP and the state government. They will own the building via a lease on council's land. It will be restricted to public access to use as a community facility on certain hours when the school is using it. And the demolition of the existing pavilion, there is no facility and no temporary accommodation for user groups and clubs to utilise the facilities because the, this particular master plan has made no provision for temporary accommodation for the user groups or the sporting clubs to use it. So there's no contribution, all in part, to the construction of the new pavilion.
Thank you councillor James. I think just for the benefit of the viewing public, I might just call upon our head of governance, Miss Shay, to address the disposal of land matter. Then I might call on Miss Moore, just to talk about the master plan very briefly as well. Because I think it's important that we don't muddy the waters. This was addressed, if members understood correctly, last Monday night in our workshop. Obviously, the members of the public don't have, didn't have the benefit of that discussion. So, Miss Shay, over to you briefly, please, regarding disposal of land.
Thank you, Miss Moore. Why does the commission need to dispose of the public plan? The recommendation is to adopt a master plan. The latest step would be to dispose of the public plan in part of the need for council to rescind the previous council procedure from 2018 to 2019.
Thank you, Miss Shay. Miss Moore, would you like to address the other matter, please, regarding the master plan?
Yeah, through you, mayor. I understand that we have a budget proposal for the 2526 financial year to start design on the pavilion. And we do have access to temporary facilities that will be able to come down and come on to the site to be used in the meantime. So we'll be able to accommodate any sports clubs that are currently using that site as part of implementation of the master plan, if that's the concern of councillor James.
Thank you, Miss Moore, thank you. Calling for other colleagues, for anyone else wishing to make a contribution. Does anyone, thank you councillor Walker.
Thank you. It has been a long and winding road with the Cambridge Master Plan. Goes back some time and obviously I am excited to see the dog park as campaigned for back in 18, as endorsed by council, I thank those colleagues here that did finally going underway. I thank, mayor, I do thank councillor James for tabling the 2018 10th of September minutes, as is the joys and the tumult of local government. You can see that I happily moved a motion around this. Only for my dear friend, the late Kay McFarlane, to some insult me with a alternate. I take no umbrage to that, I'm sure I've done the same to others in the past, which meant that I couldn't actually support what was put forward then. And one of the reasons to raise this is to give a shout out to the school community, who I think have often been the meat in the sandwich between council and what is now known as DCIP. I think, I think you could say council or councillors perhaps were somewhat recalcitrant in their approach to how to problem solve the challenges this school was facing. And let's face it, each and every member of that school almost entirely, because I don't think there's a lot of out of area students, Clarence residents. It's a great school, a school under tremendous pressure as far as enrolments go. There's been a long wait for this to happen. And it has been delayed, as I said, I think councillors can reflect on contributions. And DCIP is pretty far from being without blame in this process. DCIP is the rebranding of the Department of Education. And I'm aware I don't have privilege, I will say they are the biggest Soviet as far as bureaucracies go in this state. Lethargic as far as being, in the sense of not being able to be nimble when the challenges that arise with this project occur. And that has also delayed it along. So I'm looking forward to this happening. I think it's going to be great for the wider Clarence community when the master plan is up and running. I certainly hope that this is the way forward or the circuit breaker for the school. And I encourage my colleagues to support the motion. And don't put any amendments.
Any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution without Soviet references, please? Councillor Mulder, you have a right to apply, please.
You have to explain what a Soviet actually is. It's not a department of education. The, I think, dealing with councillor James's issue, who incidentally voted against it, as did councillor Walker, back in the early days. But the thing that strikes me is that the recommendation amounted to basically an ambit claim for the existing club, that the existing clubrooms and toilet facilities and redevelopment of new light facilities on the eastern end of it. Such cost and relocation to be further negotiated by council and state, noting that the existing facilities are to continue in use until replacement facilities are built. Now, when you go into negotiations, taking a reference from some of the ones that are happening in Ukraine at the moment. The thing is, you go in with an ambit claim and an ambit position and then you negotiate an acceptable solution. What's the point of further negotiation if neither side's willing to give on some of their preconditions? And that's exactly what happened here. And might I say, what we got, in exchange for the Department of Education completely funding the gymnasium, was that we get, the community gets after hours access to that gymnasium because it's built on our land. And in exchange for that, because it's relocated to a more suitable site, which the Department of Education was prepared to fund, we can then move on to, and that required the relocation of these, demolition of these clubrooms. Noting that, of course, changing the location, which was part of the negotiation and which is why they got their money, meant that this condition we had before couldn't be met. So consequently, and staff once again, to their credit, have come up with a way around that. So you have here an excellently negotiated position. What's wrong with that? I don't know, but I would commend the staff, as I did at the beginning, for the way this has been negotiated, for keeping us informed on the way through, as others have contributed, and we get up with a result. Now, as I mentioned earlier, it's not necessarily the ideal arrangement that I would want either. But then everyone has to give something when you're negotiating, to get something. Give something to get something. What we have given is the way the cost of demolishing that thing. What we have gained is a community access to what is an education department building. To me, I think they're all winners in here.
Thank you, I'll put the motion, that is the recommendation. All those in favour? I'll put the motion, that is the recommendation, uh, all those in favour. Those against, so carried. Thank you. Moving now on to eight point four governance, eight point four point one, the Southern Tasmanian Regional Land Use Strategy Urban Growth Boundary Update. I'll call for a mover of the recommendation. Councillor James, thank you. Is there a second? Thank you councillor Hunter.
As we discussed, uh, there's wins and losses, I suppose you could say in this. And, um, and I for one disagreed with a couple of these. The rest I, I full, I fully support. And I think it's a great way, and I'm going to pay the minister a compliment here because a number of these issues, these areas which are outside the urban growth boundary, and I know this isn't, doesn't necessarily mean it's going to happen. It's got to go through a number of other processes. But at the end of the day, there is a number of areas that have been identified within Clarence that we need to look at and support. And we've taken that initiative by the very nature of taking on board, uh, the officer's recommendation. And I think it's a really good effort. At the end of the day, uh, we may not get this, it may not happen. But at least the minister has listened to a number of these, um, land owners. I won't necessarily say developers, but they are included in there if, if, if it fits. So at the end of the day, we have started a discussion. And at the end of the day, I believe it's appropriate that we send this message forward and let it take its course. I seek council support.
Thank you councillor James. Councillor Hunter.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, I actually have a very quite different sentiment, uh, to the previous speaker. I am actually extremely disappointed that the minister has raised this while the review of the Southern Tasmania Regional Land Use Strategy is currently underway. And then to step in and try to jump the gun before taking that holistic strategic approach, which is the whole intent behind that document, which local government has been pushing and advocating for, for several years. We finally get the opportunity and resources, time, dedication from, uh, council officers as well as councillors, such as councillor Hume, to contribute to that strategy is, um, a bit of a disgrace in my view. Uh, but I would like to thank council officers in their deliberate and thorough response to the proposed changes. And I am pleased to see what they have recommended, recommended because they are pretty much in line with what was thinking with the review of the Southern Tasmania Regional Land Use Strategy. So thank you to the officers for the work that they've done and I'm happy to support the recommendation.
Thank you councillor Hunter. Councillor Hume, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Um, I would like to echo councillor Hunter's sentiments about, um, the expressing disappointment about what the, the ministers decide to do procedurally here. Um, and, uh, in, in moving, uh, the recommendation, um, what, what we are actually doing is endorsing a submission. And I, I just want to read from the conclusion of that submission because, um, I think it pertains to, um, what councillor James has suggested. Um, you know, we, we, we're actually saying in this submission that we're disappointed, um, that this process has been initiated and that, you know, the delays it's caused to Strulus. So it says, it is the submission of the Clarence city, uh, the city of Clarence, that the consultation paper is premature and any changes to the UGB should be considered through the current review of Strulus. Um, as a member of the Strulus Review Steering Committee, um, we have been incredibly frustrated by ongoing delays caused by a lack of feedback. Um, we, we still only have draft, uh, Tasmanian Planning Principles. Um, there are a number of things that we've been seeking feedback on from not only the State Planning Office, but a number of other state government agencies. Um, and so these delays, um, have also caused, uh, budgetary issues for the Steering Committee, um, which is overseeing the budget. And may as a result of those budgetary issues, if, um, the state government doesn't provide sufficient funding to, to extend the project as necessary, um, and they're offering some funding, but it's not sufficient, um, the Steering Committee is actually going to have to go back to councils and ask for, ask for the funding because, um, we just can't continue the project otherwise. Um, and it's also not a holistic approach. It's an ad hoc approach to looking at the urban growth boundary. Um, and it's, it's an ad hoc approach that a lot of it seems to be based on, um, which, uh, landowners and which developers have the ear of the minister. And I'm not saying those landowners, you know, um, got on them for putting their case forward. Um, I would too if I was a landowner and I, I wanted to see, uh, my land developed. But at the same time, there are potentially other landowners who, who miss out. So it's an ad hoc approach that doesn't really look at, um, strategic planning principles that apply to the, the whole of Southern Tasmania or, or, you know, the whole of Greater Hobart when we're looking at urban areas. So I, I think it's extremely disappointing. Having said that, it is right and proper that council puts forward a view on these, um, proposals. Um, and I, you know, I fully support, um, the view that we've put. Um, reflecting on, uh, some proposals in, in central Lauderdale. I, I do think that is a difficult area. Um, and it's not just about whether an area is feasible. We also need to consider the, um, the issue of, you know, what, what does it cost to, uh, to, to develop and to, to rezone and to densify an area. Um, so I think, um, uh, Mr Marr and his team have done an excellent job in putting this submission together and I thank them for it.
Thank you councillor Hume. Colleagues, I would just indicate as well that I'll put this recommendation in two parts, Ed Sariatum. So A and B, I'll put them both separately. Uh, councillor Mulder.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. We need to get something sorted here. The minister controls the urban growth boundary. He seeks advice from the minister, from the Tasmanian, the State Planning Office, but in the end it's his decision. And we through this council have been through a number of iterations, particularly with the previous minister, um, that the rules kept changing as to what you're supposed to do. At one supposed time, you were supposed to have the council recommend it. And then on the other, and then, uh, after that, um, you know, was going on for a while, uh, then he decided that no councils wouldn't recommend it, they could apply to him direct. And I think the rules have changed again. So, you know, at this stage now, we're talking about a line on a map. We're not talking about construction or anything. We're not talking about subdivisions at, at this stage. Um, so the minister controls the urban growth boundary. Now, site constraints may preclude whether or not you actually get residential development there at all. Because, you know, there are some of the site constraints, um, that we have battled here with for ages. And, uh, and, uh, one of those is actually included in the recommendations. But it's a question that the minister determines. Advice of councils is being sought, as all good ministers do, but whether he heeds it or not is a totally different matter. So it's, what I'm saying is that the developers who have missed out on these, and I happen to disagree, um, with the officer's recommendation on these, uh, because I think that, um, you know, the capacity constraints relative to these sites are capable of being solved and are capable of being met. But the minister has a track record of ignoring, of doing what he wants to do and ignoring the advice that he gets, including, might I say, in the DAP process, the advice he was getting from his own planning commission. So here we have. Um, now, another, another issue that I have is that, um, uh, six days ago, the minister announced that Tasmania is continuing to make our planning system simpler, fairer and fairer. And he's going to repeal the Local Government Building and Miscellaneous Provisions Act nineteen ninety three, subject to streamlining the approvals of subdivisions. Reading it all about how the building sector and everyone's being caused by all these inordinate delays and, uh, and reading between the lines, um, blaming councils for what he did during DAPs when he even admitted it was only a perception, not a fact, but that didn't stop them. So they're going on with this. Um, and I see this really as calling powers. That we take these things out of the Miscellaneous Government Act and we put some of the provisions, obviously not all of them, or they wouldn't be doing it. And I suspect here that we are going to see subdivision calling powers, streamlining of the subdivision process. Um, and, uh, that you could find that, um, the urban growth grant that gets built out, they're putting a subdivision and major project unit or someone else works it out because it's over ten million dollars or something like that. So I have deep suspicions that this is, um, that this urban growth boundary is just a precursor to calling in all subdivisions. Should that happen, um, I think, um, that's something that the Planning Matters Alliance would need to get really serious about. And if you match that with the DAP legislation, which I suspect this might be, under a different format, you then have, because a project's over worth a certain million dollars and what subdivision isn't worth more than, you know, it's a pretty small subdivision that doesn't rack up into the, uh, into the ten, twenty, thirty million dollar range, right? Which is well over the benchmark, would you believe, for a major project? So a little bit of tweaking here and, uh, and what we're doing. As I said, I disagree with some of them. Um, I certainly believe that, uh, that some of these ones are appropriate. Um, I do wish, um, that the review of the urban growth boundary had been a consistent statewide review and not picking little bits and pieces, uh, that you want. So, um, all I can say is that, um, I, I, I have to, I support the bulk of the recommendations. Um, but, uh, if you, if we're taking on, um, on the, uh, Ed Sariatum, I, uh, I, I might, I have to have a look at my position, uh, as to whether, um, I'm going to recommend anything. But as I said, um, given the minister's track record, it wouldn't matter what we did.
Any other colleagues wishing to make contribution? Councillor Walker, thank you.
Thank you. Um, I will be supporting the motion. Uh, whilst some say unfettered sprawl is the solution to housing challenges, others, uh, may say density is the only answer. Um, the simple fact is to, to alleviate some of the challenges we're facing at the moment. We're going to need a bit of both, or quite a lot of both perhaps. Um, that said, I mean, the density we talk about is, doesn't seem to be focused as we might want it in, in the CBD. It's currently haphazard suburban infill. Um, and I've sometimes referred to that as dumb fill, uh, because it is the, um, quintessential ad hocacy which is going on as far as housing, uh, is, is being developed at the moment. Um, as I said, if with density, if we could principally target it, make it, um, the expansion predominantly in the CBD, we'd be providing a whole range of housing solutions that we currently don't have in Clarence in an ideally suited area. Um, what I have been pleased with, with this debate is, um, whilst people have been expressing concerns, they've not been saying whilst like eighty percent of this is twenty percent, I don't say it's not going to happen. It seems that, um, this motion would get through, one, one hopes. Um, uh, I think it's a fairly nimble and nuanced approach that the officers have taken. Um, so, uh, I seek its support because, uh, it will add, you know, potentially hundreds more housing blocks to the mix and many that are eminently suitable. So let's see how we go.
Thank you councillor Walker. Anyone else wishing to make a contribution?
Well, colleagues, before I call on councillor James to write a reply, I now enter the debate as a councillor and not as your mayor. Uh, I take the rather unorthodox position of not endorsing the officer's submission before us this evening. Despite this council's formal support and initiation of a change to the urban growth boundary in both two thousand twenty one and two thousand twenty two, for fifty two Richardson's Road, Sanford, the officers, as we're aware, are now recommending that this change no longer be supported. Since council initiated the change, the proponents have invested many tens of thousands of dollars in developing the concept and working with the state government to secure support for their council endorsed application. A complete reversal of support now, after the minister has agreed to amend the urban growth boundary, not only undermines the significant effort and resources the proponents have invested, but also sends a deeply concerning message about the reliability of this council's decisions, potentially eroding business confidence in our city. More broadly, I do not believe the submission provides a complete overview. Specifically, whilst the Strulus update is recommending there is enough land within the UGB already, there's only been public consultation of the State of Play Report, not the full document. And ultimately, uh, the minister, as councillor Mulder referenced, is the one who needs to sign off on this. Just because land is within the urban growth boundary doesn't necessarily mean the land is feasible to develop and will be rezoned to general residential. The officers have rightly queried the dwelling yield on the proposed sites, but this also applies, as we all appreciate, to existing underutilized sites within the urban growth boundary. The dwelling yield on constrained sites, which is most of what is left within the urban growth boundary, is generally about half the theoretical yield, as we've seen at one forty seven Bayview Road and twenty one, uh, Matapoe Street. As part of this Strulus review, an independent consultant, REM Plan, conducted a residential demand and supply study that estimated housing supply requirements through two thousand forty six. This study estimated that Clarence will require one thousand eight hundred and fifty eight new dwellings outside the existing urban growth boundary by that time. It also found that Clarence has only a four-year supply of vacant residential land outside of the urban growth boundary. Excuse me. So since council approved Richardson's Road for inclusion in the urban growth boundary, both February two thousand twenty one and again in March two thousand twenty two, the housing supply shortfall has become worse. And the need for a pipeline of feasible infill and greenfield housing options has become critical. In response to the statement that the inclusion of fifty two Richardson's Road would create, and I quote, "a separated urban form that would be difficult to effectively service and make it less livable," unquote, it is important to note that, at significant cost, the proponents have already undertaken the majority of background reports required for rezoning or a DA, which includes detailed civil engineering costings. The engineering clearly shows that the site can be fully serviced and only required upgrades will be at the developer's, sorry, and any required upgrades will be at the developer's cost. In terms of livability, the proponents are committed to delivering a carefully designed, gold standard master plan incorporating best practice urban design, as well as integrated community recreation spaces and environmental protections within thirty five hectares of public open space. Colleagues, this project will create economic and social benefits for the Lauderdale community. As we know, demand in the area remains extremely high, yet new housing options are virtually non-existent. Additionally, the site's elevated location provides climate resilience and future-proofed housing for Lauderdale, which otherwise faces flood and inundation risks, as we're all aware. Unlike most other sites proposed for urban growth boundary amendment, this project is already well advanced. If the minister approves the UGB amendment, I understand the proponents will be ready to commence full consultation with council and community on their rezoning and master plan concept to then be assessed on its merits. Colleagues, simply put, we need to support strategic growth in our city and not be the handbrake on greatly needed housing supply. And for these reasons, I will not support part B of tonight's recommendation.
Councillor James, you'll write a reply, please?
Well, Mr Mayor, and may I say that, um, the, the frustration of the Strus being reviewed, and it was first declared by the minister for planning in two thousand eleven, and we've been advised that there has been and there is an ongoing review in relation to the Strus. At the end of the day, the minister has really taken the first step. And I congratulate him because it's going to cause and create a discussion. And by the very nature of that discussion, it may lead and it may not, uh, eventuate as to what, uh, we have been proposed this evening as part of the recommendation from our planner. The Part A notes the proposed Southern Tasmanian Regional Land Use Strategy Urban Growth Boundary Update Consultation Paper, which has been released the comment. And that, by the very nature, encapsulates all of those six councils in the Greater Hobart area for inclusion in those, in the urban growth boundary and seven sites, two hundred and eighty one point three hectares have been identified in Clarence. Now, all of those there have been Now, all of those there have been scrutinized, we've had them, we've discussed them at workshop. And, and I personally, even though there's a couple there I don't agree with, I believe that the planner has put forward in accordance with what we have discussed in relation to Lordedale in the past and the constraints that have been applied in relation to that, that that recommendation is worthy of support, and I believe we should follow suit with that. With regard to part B, I believe that we as a council, we have winners and we have others that are not what we necessarily agree with, but the actual approach by the minister to be able to take this forward for discussion and therefore identify that some of these areas need to be outside the current urban growth boundary, and by the very nature, that has got to go through a long, drawn-out process as such, but I believe we should support part A and part B unanimously. I seek council support.
Thank you councillor James. Well, I'll put, as I said, the recommendation in two parts, the first one being part A, all those in favor. National unanimous, thank you. I'll put part B, which is endorsing the submission, all those in favor for endorsement of submission. Those against. So carried. Thank you. Moving now on to 8.4.2, which is Delegations Under the Land Use Planning and Approvals Act of 1993. I'll call for a mover of the recommendation, please. Thank you councillor Chong, is there a second? Thank you councillor Mulder, councillor Chong, please.
The officer's recommendation, it's good process.
Thank you very much, councillor Mulder.
I too support it. I did raise a question with you in regard to my concern that we are delegating this not only to the, to the CEO of the organisation, but also to a senior manager in governance. And, and although I thought maybe, you know, we could delegate it to the, to the acting CEO, whoever that may be at the time, it appears that should the head of planning be the acting CEO, there would be a conflict of interest. So therefore you had to nominate someone in another office to be that particular case in the event that, that the head of planning was the acting mayor, acting CEO at the same time, and would therefore, you know, much as we may, may trust and love the advice we get from our planning department sometimes, it, it does create a conflict of interest. So on that basis, having had that query satisfied, I think as a matter of public record, I will endorse this, although I do raise my concerns and hope that we sort out delegations properly.
Are there any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? Thank you councillor James.
I was going to pose a question to the deputy mayor, but in her absence I'll give the miss at the stage and support the officer's recommendation.
Wonderful, thank you councillor James. Anyone else wishing to make a contribution? There being none, there's probably no need for a reply, councillor Chong. I'll put the, the motion which is the recommendation, all those in favor. National unanimous, thank you colleagues. Moving now on to item 8.4.3, which is the Proposed Local Highways Standard Requirements Bylaw, noting that this decision does require an absolute majority of council. I'll call for a mover of the recommendation, please. Thank you councillor Mulder, is there a second? A councillor Hunter, thank you. Councillor Mulder, please.
Colleagues would be well aware of my passion for getting decent roads and, and the sprawl and the crawl that we talk about is the only exacerbated when what amounts to subarterial roads, a chock-a-block full of private entrances, as we see in Clamperthing. So my main issue is, is that Clarence has got this bylaw, we have put our conditions on it, we've identified arterial, subarterial, feeder roads, collector roads, or whatever they might be called, and, and as a consequence, we've now built conditions and standards around them. My concerns, I think, often related to the capacity of officers at will to amend them. So you start to wonder why you have standards if those sorts of amendments don't need to come back to this chamber. If there are exceptional circumstances and someone needs to do something that is in conflict with this roads and traffic bylaws, then I think it should be a matter of public discussion and debate, not a specific recommendation. To vary. Getting on to the, on to the thing as a whole, my only qualification is that these local highway standards are applicable to the city of Clarence. And if the state government or the minister takes it under DAP or other legislation and seeks to apply those conditions, or if the conditions are appealed, this is only binding on us. The policies and protocols that we develop around this road network, sound as they are, can be overturned by the minister or, or another agency who does the assessing. And that, to me, is a grave concern. You know, that, that, that could happen. But in the meantime, while we've got it here, and, and that's, the thing is, is that we've made so many mistakes in the past, and my passion is in not repeating them, and I think specifically of the Skylands Plan. The Droofy Point-Oceana Road connection needs to be a subarterial road without private entrances, so you don't get that conflict of cars parking and blocking the streets. You don't get the fact that a bus pulls up here and suddenly another bus and a car can't pass each other, and we get all those dangerous entrances of people who are running up a 60 kilometre road. Now, there's plenty of that, but we've got examples of where we've got it right, Pass Road. We've got many more examples of where we've got it wrong. Tollard Drive, Cambridge Road, the other parts of Oceana Drive, you know, where, you know, crests and hills and bounces and caravans parked on the side of the road. We've got a person who parks a caravan on the opposite side of a bus stop on a crest, and guess what? If someone overtakes a parked bus, they won't see the car coming that's also in the middle of the road trying to get past the thing. So, I mean, those sorts of things, here's a classic example of why we, why we need this policy, why we need to apply it to all the greenfields development, especially we've discussed tonight, there might be a few more of them coming on. So that's the way you deal with these things, not having entrances onto highways, arterial and collector road. So I commend the Clarence, the city of Clarence, the staff for putting this through, for going out to consultation, for taking heed of the feedback that many of us have had on this, on this issue, and, and look forward to the state government not undermining all our good policy work.
Thank you councillor Mulder. Councillor Hunter, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm pleased to see this come back to us. It's surprising to know there were no representations received, unfortunately. I'm pleased to support this. It's great to see improvements, particularly in relation to footpaths and bicycle lanes. Yeah, hopefully we can have even more of those going forward. It's great to see some of the widths of those change as well, so I'm happy to support this.
Thank you councillor Hunter. Anyone else wishing to make? councillor Chong, thank you.
Can I give you some a question? And I apologise for not having asked this before. In the actual bylaw, in number two, it says the bylaw of the 2014, made in December 2014, and notified on the 6th of October 2004. Should that be 14?
Thank you. Michelle?
Thank you for that, that there is a tie-up, so they'll be amended. Thank you.
Just, just to make sure we do all of our reading, thank you councillor Chong. Any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? There being none, councillor Mulder, do you, yes, have a write a reply please? Thank you. All right, thank you. I'll put the motion which is the recommendation, all those in favor. National unanimous, thank you colleagues. Moving now on to eight point, and that was an absolute majority, so being unanimous, 8.4.4, which is Local Government Priority Reform Programme 2024-26 Discussion Paper. Thank you. I'll call for a mover of the recommendation, please. Thank you councillor Hunter, on a roll tonight, is there a second? I'm going to go councillor Goine. Just, just to mix things up a little bit.
I've exceeded my quota, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. councillor Hunter, thank you.
Uh, yeah, so many interesting topics on the agenda tonight. Look, this, this makes sense. I think officers have done an excellent job in putting together a response on behalf of Clarence City Council. I would like to note that when I initially read what was proposed, it's just like, oh yeah, that sounds good, that sounds good, that sounds good. What I really appreciate of what the council officers do is they go through with fine-toothed comb and actually apply that in a practical sense of what it would mean. And it's great to read their response, because it highlights and asks really important practical questions that I hadn't thought about, so, and really important to highlight in the submission. So thank you to them, happy to support.
Thank you. councillor Goine? Oh, wow, thank you. councillor Mulder?
Here we go again, we've got this whole reform programme, and the little test I use, before you start slagging off at councils, government, have a look at your own behaviour. Why don't you apply this to yourselves? And then you'll be able to demonstrate, sorry, you'll have to do a complete amount of backflip, you have to have a, you know, because they've, they're really into this thing. Now, disrespect and all the rest of it, and, and, you know, and, and we'll often contradict each other in this chamber, but the mere use of a word or sometimes a rather is frowned upon because the expectations are that we'll be all united and we'll form a, you know, affinity circle and sing kumbaya, that, but that's not the nature of debate, it's not the nature of disagreement. Sometimes it gets a little passionate, sometimes some people say things that really disturb us or that are plain, in my view, stupid, but are you allowed to say that? Come on. Apply these rules to yourself first, and then decide whether you want to apply them to someone else. These are the sorts of rules that political debate, it needs to be vigorous. It doesn't need to be aggressive, or doesn't need to be to cause fear or to feel people feel unsafe, no, that's not appropriate. It's not appropriate in the parliament, and it's not appropriate here. So how about bringing these rules into the parliament, demonstrating what you can do, and then bring them to us for consideration?
Thank you councillor Mulder. Anyone else wishing to make a contribution? Thank you councillor Hume.
Just wanted to make a quick contribution on proposed reform number five about clarifying work health and safety obligations and the council's submission in relation to that, in that our, our submission is that the CEO should no longer have responsibility when it comes to the obligations of a PCBU, when it comes to work health and safety and the conduct of councillors. And that, that's a pretty sensible suggestion, because as, you know, I know our, our CEO has noted, the CEO doesn't really have any control over what councillors do and councillors do and say. I suppose the, the mayor doesn't have that power either, but.
You're absolutely correct.
But, but, you know, it, it makes, yeah, it, it just, it just makes sense that, you know, essentially, we sort of form, in essence, a board of directors that employs the CEO and, you know, whereas the CEO is responsible for the staff. So I think that's a sensible and good suggestion.
Right, thank you. councillor James?
I wasn't going to make any comment, but I just thought that I might refer to Para Eight, improving the strategic planning and reporting frameworks. Changes to the Local Government Act will provide a set of the underpinning improved flexibility and overtime the way councils plan for the future and report to the community on their progress and achievements. And the council's submission on the, noted here, council's current strategic plan clearly identifies community wellbeing in a strategic goal area, Mr Mayor, a people-friendly city, unquote. This reform will add strength to wellbeing priorities for community services and art and cultural activities. So this is really getting to the nitty-gritty of where we need to be a people-friendly city and involve our, our ratepayers and residents and treat them with respect. And I think that's really where I'm hoping this amendments to the Local Government Act will reach out to one and all, and that we pay the respect to our people who we represent. And we are only here for a short time unless we decide to make a, a career of it. And that, by the very nature, that by the very nature of it makes it clear that we need to have a better approach to make the strategic goal area a people-friendly city more appropriate, and hopefully in these particular amendments, we will all strive to reach that particular goal and make it a better working relationship between the executive, that's us, and the people we represent. I support the motion.
Any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? councillor Walker, thank you.
Yeah, some of it's a bit take it or leave it, but in general, if this all goes through, we should see better performing local government, rather than a retrograde response. I, I like things like the enhancing transparency of information in council rates notices. I think that it really varies markedly from council to council, and some of the performance ranking stuff might finally get up. It's been talked about for a long time, 2014 was all going to happen, but it sort of faded away. Councils need to be more accountable for their performance and people need, whatever we can do to make sure that people have a better understanding of how their council is going compared to others, not only is that useful for the ratepayers, it's informative to councils to see where they need to get better as well. So I'll back it.
Thank you councillor Walker. Anyone else wishing to make a contribution? There being none, councillor Hunter, you write a reply please.
Nothing further to add, I seek my colleague's support.
Thank you. I'll put the motion which is the recommendation regarding Local Government Priority Reform Programme 24 to 26 Discussion Paper, all those in favor. Thank you. Against? That's so carried, thank you. Moving now on to item 8.4.5, which is the Model Dispute Resolution Policy. Before I do go on to this, can I just make the note that we've had five governance issues tonight, governance matters, and Miss Chee is no longer in the hot seat. So thank you, Miss Chee, for this, well, well organised. So I'll call for a mover of the recommendation, please. Thank you councillor Chong, is there a second? We do need a second. Thank you councillor Warren, councillor Chong, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, very briefly. I, look, I didn't think we had a bad procedure to start with, but I think there's perfect logic to, to have a model one that works across all councils, and I think it would be great for us to support this.
Thank you councillor Chong. councillor Warren, please.
Yes, as per the recommendation, anything we can do to reduce disputes being used as a tool, as, as a weapon, I think is, is good, and it's good to be consistent across all councils.
Thank you councillor Warren. Anyone else wishing to make a contribution to this item? There being none, there's no need for a reply. I'll put the motion which is the recommendation, all those in favor. So carried unanimously, thank you colleagues. Moving now on to motions on notice, councillor Mulder, your notice of motion regarding the City Heart Plan, which is 9.1. Now, I do understand, councillor Mulder, that you have circulated an amendment. The issue is, as we experienced a meeting or so ago, we don't have the capacity to show this on a screen via the, no, at home to those viewing online. So councillor Mulder, we'll just, I will read the amended motion as I understand it, so we won't endure time at all, and that is that the difference is, it's the second dot point, please quickly if I'm incorrect here, but it's the change to prepares an infrastructure plan for the area. And in explanatory notes, it's the change to read the master plan is premature, and that's the only change in explanatory notes? Oh, thank you, sorry, sorry, and the third dot point as well, uses the infrastructure plan as a basis for future consultation proposals for each of the areas within the so-called City Heart. consultation proposals for each of the areas within the so-called City Heart. So, Council Mulder, I'll call for a second up. Is there a second up for Council Mulder's motion? Castle James, thank you. Council Mulder, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This motion proposes suspending the City Heart Plan in order to develop an infrastructure plan before moving on to then consult with the community, but on an area-by-area basis. Whatever we eventually do with open spaces, there is a pressing need to deal with the connectivity and access to open spaces for roads, pedestrians, cycling and personal mobility devices. We must also deal with the stormwater issues of the Rivulet that regularly floods a major intersection, road junction, right in the heart of the city. Once that is in place and when some more of the known and unknowns become clearer, we can identify in broad terms what the potential uses of the various areas might be. Proceeding with what we have is both impractical and, I think, inappropriate. We are about to suspend Charles Hand Park from the plan. We previously moved the Kangaroo Bay Hotel site, once described by the mayor as the jewel in the crown, prior to the pre-election backflip. With neither hand nor jewel, let alone arteries, how can we be designing a heart? The future of Sham Broadside is unknown and we have no contingency proposals, well, none that I'm aware of. The history of the current project, the current plan is checkered. It was originally developed by consultants in twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-two. The consultation plan made no or little mention of known significant proposals that councils were considering for the area. We knew there was a prospect of a new city hall on the front lawns, lawns that are actually used by many people. We know we are proposing a culture and arts centre for the Rosney Parklands. We know we need a new egress road from Rosney Hill to Gordon's Hill. The current egress passes through a private property and is regularly congested. We know that we must rebuild this building or relocate staff to another site. In fact, most people weren't aware of the proposed housing on the fringes of Charles Hand Park, which is perfectly understandable, given they were buried in the detail on the website. A shaded section on a small map with a tiny unreadable legend. Even the Rosney Park activists were unaware until I started comparing the footprint of a high-performance centre to that of the existing housing proposal. It is interesting to note that my contribution in Council Summer Newsletter was hastily added to the consultation because it contained issues that weren't but should have been in the master plan. With apologies to the other Donald, and I refer to Donald Rumsfeld, all these known knowns and unknown knowns, surely now is not the time to plough on as if nothing has changed. I want to be absolutely clear that I am in favour of moderate developments in some of these areas. I was supportive of a modern hotel on Kangaroo Bay. I was in favour of a moderately sized gymnasium. I support moderate housing on the fringes of Charles Hand Park, you know, directly opposite the existing houses and modest residential properties. I am also bemused that some around this table think that an AFL High Performance Centre was a great idea for Charles Hand Park, but that housing is totally inappropriate. And some are opposed to both housing and a high-performance centre, but enthusiastic about a $20 million art centre on the parkland. Either you are building things in these places or you are not. But if there is to be a hierarchy, surely housing should be tops. Now is the time to reset. Plan the connectivity, stormwater and other infrastructures for the whole area before moving to consider what, if any, developments are appropriate on an area-by-area basis. In this way, community consultation will be meaningful and there will be no rabbits leaping out of hats.
Council Mulder, before I call on Council James, I'll just make two observations. One, please don't reflect on other colleagues' new contributions. Secondly, council will consider removing the housing element from Charles Hand Park, but a decision hasn't yet been made. So I think it's important that we don't mislead the community and what we say in this place, please. Castle James.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And may I say from the outset that we have, from time to time, we have ideas and they come in to this place and they are suggested as being worthy for discussion. And I refer to my learned colleague, Councilor Beth Warren, when she raised the comment in relation to ideas and how they should be progressed because it adds to the discussion and it brings about a position that we may or may not hold to at the end of the day. Having said that, I supported this motion on the basis that it's an idea. I know my colleague, Councilor Mulder, has had very interesting, to say the least, and that word interesting seems to crop up in many aspects these days, aspects to it. But at the end of the day, we've gone through the High Performance Centre. We had a win, the seven of us, as opposed to the five that, sorry, the seven who pursued it and the five that stood firmly against the High Performance Centre on either of those grounds on Charles Hand and so on. That is done. As a result of that, the CEO brought back into the mix the City Heart. And this council has spent in excess of $400,000 on the interim City Heart Plan and then the final. We've been out to consultation, we've had a lot of other interesting points come forward. We've had a public meeting only last week at Rosney Bowls Club. And there was a lot of people there who were interested in where we're heading with the City Heart. And most of them agree with what we need to do and revitalise the parks and also the environs and so on. And the mayor's quite rightfully said, we haven't made a decision, but it may be that affordable housing or social housing or workman's housing, whatever you call it, will not be part of that. Now, that's still to be determined, but the strength of what has come out of the consultation process, I understand, and I'm not sure I can actually go into the detail because I don't, haven't had a look at the report yet and it's not going to be released for a short time ahead. But at the end of the day, we've done a lot of work on City Heart and we need to progress it. And at the moment, to throw these sort of spanners in the work is, and I'm not trying to ridicule, and I don't use that word, but it's inappropriate, in my opinion, to be able to throw these matters into the mix when we've got a full-blown consultation process, we've got the report to come out. And I think at the end of the day, we will have a good 80% approval, hopefully, on what will happen in Rosney Parklands and Charles Hand Park. That's really where I'm coming from. And at the end of the day, there may be some development and that may be appropriate because I think every council has to have a contribution to, at its, at its contribution to the housing. But not on our parklands, not on Rosney Parklands, not on Charles Hand Park, but there are other areas that this council could look at and offer some of that land to the benefit of those who are unfortunate enough to have not have a roof over their heads or be actually in a state of homelessness. So I will not support this. I did second it because I believe his ideas are good because it adds another dimension to the debate. And as I started and make reference to Councilor Warren, and I let this ring loud and clear, Council Warren, any idea that fathoms and constitutes debate is worthy of discussion.
Thank you, Castle James. Just make a point regarding discussion, social housing on Charles Hand Park. The information that was provided to councils was marked confidential. It's inappropriate in a public forum to be referencing that that matter. So I just ask councillors, please to be judicious and respectful and just follow the rules. We haven't made a decision yet regarding Charles Hand Park and the information was provided to all of us, not as executive, but as if you like, directors of the board. It was marked confidential. Please respect that. Any other colleagues wishing to make? Castle Chong, please.
Councilor Mulder talked about connectivity and connection in his initial comments. And for me, that's what the master plan is going to do. It sets that big picture and those connections between the whole area of the City Heart Plan. It doesn't have every detail in it, but it sets that holistic approach to what we want to do with the whole extended CBD area. Taking chunks, bite-by-bite chunks of it and looking at individual plans makes no sense. We can all think of developments where it's been done in isolation and hasn't worked well when it's been finalised. We run the risk if we don't look at the City Heart as a holistic area of exactly ending up with a design that we don't want. So I cannot support this notice on motion.
Thank you, Castle Chong. Castle Hunter, please. And then Castle Goine.
I'd like to thank Councilor James for highlighting the whole point of bringing ideas to this chamber and any idea is a good idea. And that's a fantastic reminder and thank you, Councilor Warren, for initially saying it. And I think that's exactly what this is and I thank Councilor Mulder for bringing this idea to us. And your motion, your amended motion makes sense from a practical perspective. However, master plans aren't about what's practical. They're visionary, they're taking a holistic approach, as Councilor Chong has just said. And the City Heart Plan is exactly that. It's ambitious. It is very, very challenging and we knew that from the start. It's trying to take something very complicated and make sense of it so that we have a vision to plan the practicalities of that vision moving forward. It's not easy. You don't give up just because it gets hard. So thank you, Councilor Mulder, for bringing this idea. However, I think we stick to what we're trying to achieve, see how much further we can get before we call it quits. Thanks.
Thank you, Castle Hunter. Castle Goine, please.
I will take great reminders in the future when I remind people that all things are worthy of bringing forward to this council the next time I bring my next conspiracy theory along and that everything's worthy of a debate in this room. And I'll note the two people that have said that too. So this is worthy of debate and thank you, Council Mulder, for bringing this forward. It is common sense. I've come to understand that there's not a lot in local government that makes a lot of sense and is common. So thank you for bringing this forward, but I cannot support either.
Castle Warren, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I won't be supporting this for two reasons. Firstly, that the City Heart Plan actually has a lot of support in the community. The community is excited about it. The community will be upset if we don't proceed, if we delay further. The second reason that I don't support this motion is that if you start with an infrastructure plan, if you start by designing the roads, then you get a City Heart that's designed for cars. I want a City Heart that's designed for people.
Castle Walker.
Stand and find a few words, Mr Mayor. Let me just see if I can.
Sorry, I thought you had yours screwed up.
That's all right. That's okay. Look, I've got a few issues with this and I won't be supporting it. The whole point of the City Heart is it's a vision thing, right? So it's not a development application, it's not the nuts and bolts of what bricks are going where. It's to say, we want to look at all these elements that incorporate, you know, the CBD and the surrounding environs and try and think of them and plan for them and outline a vision in an integrated way. And that's those four words, in an integrated way. The opposite of doing that is this motion. It's basically getting all the bits that have come together, throwing them to separate corners and then examining each bit one by one, not bringing it together. So that's a good reason not to support it. That said, this motion is the extreme. As I said, this is taking all the bits and separating them. I also would take a dim view of taking one bit out of it because a heart, you know, without a ventricle isn't awesome. And I'd like you to think about that is if we decide to proceed and say, we're going to do the City Heart, we've invested the treasure, but we're going to have a carve-out, that carve-out could be something like Charles Hand Park, that to me would make no sense. And if we did decide to do a carve-out, let's say Charles Hand Park, then that potentially would leave a whole lot of issues unresolved. It would still mean that those that wanted to press the button on the housing, that option would still be there live on the table. So I think it would be really important that as we proceed and come to the conclusion of the City Heart thing, that we don't do carve-outs of areas. A lot of time and energy's gone into this. Feedback has come through, we're processing it, our position will evolve. I'm hopeful that the final destination will perhaps be a little bit more simple as far as not cluttering up areas like the parklands with a lot of, some of the proposed, you know, infrastructure that's supposed to be planned for there. So bear all those things in mind. Housing has come up and I think it's probably important to touch on that. The City Heart Plan, now, some people might talk about some housing in Charles Hand, the City Heart Plan envisages density, residential density within the existing CBD streetscape as we know it. And I think that's great. And I think that should be the focus first and foremost. And once you have that, then you can co- like, you have it co-located with the recreational space next door. I would also note, if we were to break this up, then the civic area would be considered in isolation. And I don't think that's a good thing either. I think that should be seen as how it works with everywhere else. And again, maybe that civic area, perhaps there's a way that residential could be actually incorporated into that. So a lot of time and treasure's gone into the City Heart process, it's been delayed. I want to see it come to its conclusion and I don't think this approach is the best way forward at all. I think it actually just takes us back to where we were at the beginning, so I don't support the motion.
Thank you, Castle Walker. Castle Tarko, would you like to? Thank you.
Because I'm basically agreeing with things that were said before, yeah, complete agreement that we should be looking at this holistically and so carving up piece by piece just doesn't feel sensible when we've already invested so much in it. And I cannot agree more with what Council Warren said in that we should be designing for people and not for cars. We've been talking about walkable cities, we've been talking about urban centres that are actually walkable and livable and that's something that's been really, really good. And I don't want to see us backtrack on that.
Thank you, Castle Tarko. Castle Hume, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I mean, much of what's said about this as a master planning exercise and the need for, you know, cohesive, comprehensive vision is reflected in the chief executive officer's comment on this motion. And that really, I think that the CEO very well summarises my thinking on this. You certainly can't accuse Councilor Mulder of not having the courage to bring forward controversial ideas to this chamber. But I think, and I do, you know, in regards to infrastructure, I do recognise that what Councilor Mulder's talking about is a lot broader than just roads. But having said that, the way I see a master planning exercise is the master plan is sort of the overall, it's not so much a detailed blueprint, but it's a, it's just a schema and a vision. And it's the structure plans and also the infrastructure that actually follow that. So, you know, the way I see it, if we do the infrastructure plan followed by the City Heart Plan, we're really putting the cart before the horse. So, look, I look forward to seeing this go forward and I think it's actually quite pleasing that, you know, the overwhelming majority of what's gone into the City Heart Plan seems to have a community, you know, a great deal of community support. There's really just, you know, sort of one element of it that seems to be controversial. I do find it interesting, however, that there were a number of people who have opposed the proposed housing on Charles Hand Park, who said we should stick to the original City Heart Plan when over two years ago. that actually included the housing on Charles Hand Park. But, you know, there are some opportunities presented in terms of, you know, how we develop and how we use Rosney Parklands and Charles Hand Park following the Tasmanian Government's flawed decision on the High Performance Centre location. And, you know, I'm looking forward to seeing those ideas developed and put forward and debated. And I have a view on the housing, but I'll leave that to when we get to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Hume. Before I call on Councillor Mulder for his right of reply, I'm now going to the debate as a councillor and as your mayor. I will not be supporting this motion. As one of the fastest-growing regions in Tasmania, Clarence must evolve to meet the changing needs and expectations of our diverse and expanding population. As our municipality grows, we need to ensure the infrastructure, public spaces and services on the eastern shore address the pain points we are experiencing now, while also preparing for tomorrow's opportunities and challenges. Rapid demographic shifts generate new demand in areas such as housing, transport, healthcare services, education, and environmental sustainability. Not only do we need to accommodate more people, but we must also address the needs of various groups, from young families to aging populations. And this requires informed urban planning that prioritises accessibility, affordability, and inclusivity. Additionally, as climate change intensifies, we must plan for resilience, integrating green infrastructure and flood management systems to protect our community from environmental risks. And these fundamental elements are at the core of our City Heart Plan. As we know, the plan outlines a vision for the future that is built on the voices of the Clarence community and will see us mature into a sophisticated, vibrant, and resilient city in which to live, work, and play. Now, while conceptual, the plan provides the blueprint to make this vision a reality within interconnected precincts that work together to create a welcoming, inclusive, and sustainable city. Importantly, the plan has been developed with our community as we've listened to plan for our future together through focus groups, workshops, panel discussions, surveys, and countless conversations. The people of Clarence have shared their hopes, their concerns, and their ideas for this wonderful place, and the result is a visionary conceptual plan that provides a framework for the city's growth over the next 20 years and beyond. After more than a year of the City Heart Plan being on hold, we have now re-engaged with our community and heard their views on what will shape our city's future. This has been a strategic and methodical process involving best-practice engagement techniques, and I for one am extraordinarily proud of our team here at council and indeed our community. Over nearly five years and an investment in excess of $400,000 of rate pays funds, I have every confidence that we are on the right track. So let me be clear. We are no longer a commuter or satellite suburb of Hobart. We're a city. We're a proud city, and we deserve the very best urban design and strategic planning. And this is what the City Heart Plan delivers, and it delivers it in spades. Colleagues, from my perspective, it's time to step up. It's time to come of age, it's time for us to lose the small-town mentality, and for us, as a council, to provide the strategic leadership that our council deserves and that they want. Together, we can and we will, with our City Heart Plan as our guiding beacon, create a city that is not just livable, but one that's exceptional, where everyone feels a true sense of pride and belonging. Councillor Mulder, I'll call on you now for your right of reply, please.
Here, here, Mr. Mayor, on all those things. And we do need a master plan. We need a master plan, right? We need a visionary document. And what we've got is a visionary document plus a proposal for housing, plus a proposal for this, and plus a specific proposal for that. We've got a City Heart Plan that doesn't have a much-needed road connection in it. We're out there consulting with people on a plan that doesn't have those basic infrastructure things in it. A visionary document, right, is exactly that. It starts off with the connectivities. And yes, as I said quite clearly, with connections and access to open spaces, in other words, it's a connectivity for roads, because we need one there. Pedestrians, cycling, and personal mobility devices. How more inclusive can you get? Is there, I don't have flight paths on there, no, true. But we also must deal, and we must deal with a stormwater issue. Now, in regard to the suspension of Charles Hand Park from the plan, I concede I misspoke. And what I should have said was, we may be about to suspend Charles Hand Park, and I know that, not from any confidential reports or confidential briefings, but from the deputy mayor who stood and did a press conference saying social housing wasn't appropriate there. Now, from that and from discussions with some of my colleagues, I had the, I knew, I got the feeling and that we might be moving into that space. As we said, we would take notice of what the community says. The thing is, is that the plan had a lot of support before, when it had social housing in it, or, sorry, key worker accommodation, another euphemism, key worker accommodation. It had that in there, and it had a lot of support. Because guess what? No one had noticed it there. But then no one had noticed the absence of the road that we've discussed about so often. So all of these matters are reasons. I am not suggesting that we destroy the whole master plan and start from scratch and do it on an area-by-area basis, as some have suggested. What I'm suggesting is that we sort out the infrastructure first, and then maybe, once we've got that sorted out, we might then go out to consultations, and that's when you put in the potential to do this building or that building. And a lot of those known unknowns will become known knowns by then. So that gives us, buys us some time to work out what we're going to do with the Shandbrook land, what's going to happen with all the spaces around here in the council zone. And as colleagues know, there are a number of options afoot, so...
Thank you, Councillor Warren. I'll put the motion standing in Councillor Mulder's name for the City Heart Plan. All those in favour? Those against?
Hate being in the minority.
That's so lost, so thank you, colleagues. We now move to item number 10, which is councillors' question time. There are no questions on notice. 10.3, answers to questions without notice previous council meeting as listed in the agenda. 10.4, questions without notice. Are there any questions on the floor starting this evening with Councillor Mulder?
Mr. Mayor, my question relates to the Droofy Point Structure Plan, aka Skylines. I do have another name for it, as Mr. Carwell knows, but I won't use it. My question relates to the motion, to that development. In December last year, Councillor Hunter successfully moved for the development of a structure plan that would involve regular updates to councillors, including workshops, briefing reports, and community consultation in an iterative development of a draft structure plan. To date, despite the appointments of consultants, there have been no councillor workshops. My question is in two parts. What is the reason for the delay? And in the context of the minister's intention to possibly incorporate, to incorporate subdivisions into the statewide planning scheme and the revised Development Assessment Panel's legislation, should this consultancy be suspended until the ground is a little clearer?
Thank you, Councillor Mulder. Acting CEO.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I know council officers have been working on this, but I'll defer to Ms. Olsen for a further response.
Thank you for your question, Councillor Mulder. I believe that there is an imminent workshop for councillors regarding that project. So I would watch this space closely. It's not far away. So it's not, I don't believe that there is a reason to halt progress at this stage.
Thank you, Ms. Olsen. Your second question, Councillor Mulder.
The first question was in two parts, but was in the context of the minister's intention. Is this something we should possibly suspend?
Oh, Councillor Mulder, that's not an issue for Ms. Olsen. That's a consideration for this council to determine, not for the officers to determine.
Well, my second question, which is a supplementary one to that, is...
No, no, this is your second question, Councillor Mulder.
Okay, my second question. Where was I going with this? So what was the reason for the delay taking up to this point in time? Which was actually the question I asked.
Thank you, Councillor Mulder. Ms. Olsen.
Thank you, Councillor Mulder. I believe that they weren't in a position to provide you with the best information at the time, that they had previously planned to provide you with a workshop. So they're just making sure that there is substantial information for you to see before they provide it to you.
If I can also, before I call on the acting CEO, thank you, Ms. Olsen. Mr. Ma provided a briefing to me some weeks ago, indicating, when I asked him about the status of this, indicating that, and please correct me if I get this wrong, but my understanding was that the brief wasn't fulfilled to the satisfaction of Mr. Ma and Ms. Olsen. So the consultants were sent back to do further work before they came to elected members in a workshop setting in the first instance. So there was some work that wasn't completed to the satisfaction of the head of city planning. So that's why they had to go back and do additional work. Do we have a date for the workshop briefing?
I don't believe so, but we'll take that on notice and inform council when ELT reviews the workshop. But also from your words, I believe you're correct.
Yep, thank you very much. Councillor Hunter. Thank you, Councillor Hume.
Thank you, Mayor. Two questions for me tonight. The first one was referring to my notice of motion, which colleagues supported, and I thank them for that support, on restrictive covenants that are used to determine, you know, who can live in particular developments based on their social status. I understand that the minister at the time, Mr. Yench, committed to looking at that and doing something about it. I'm just wondering if you had any advice about whether there's any work progressing in that space.
Well, Ms. Shay's shaking her head. We can certainly follow up, but it's not uncommon for some things to remain on some minister's desk for an inordinate length of time. So I'm sorry, but we'll find, we will look into that and advise.
That is definitely the case, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate that. Thank you. The second question is, the building that was previously tenanted by the Rokeby Neighbourhood Centre, what future is intended for that building?
Thank you, Councillor Hume. Ms. Shay, do you have an answer for that, please? Thank you. Councillor James.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First question is, election 2026 is October next year, and before long it will be upon us. So my question is, is the appropriate officer able to advise us of some, whether there's finality or outcome with regard to the Rosney Hill development and the Kangaroo Bay Boulevard?
In regards to where they're at, I think we'll take that on notice and provide an answer in the minutes. And I'll take that as one question, you're very lucky, but... Next question.
Yes, look, the next is an update on our master plans. Last year, I believe, we were provided with the list and where we're at with those and the outcome. So I appreciate an update on that, my list, and what we have in train. And as part of that, where are we with the Little Howard Beach master plan?
Certainly. Well, thank you. The first part of the question, our quarterly reports provide updates as to where we are with master plans. They're always available every three months. And you'd be aware, the consultation with Little Howard Beach Draft Master Plan finished earlier this month. Ms. Wicks, do you want to talk to that and, if you're able to? Or, sorry, acting CEO, my apologies.
I'll defer to Ms. Wicks on the Little Howard Beach master plan. But in terms of master plans and the status, we are coming to the next workshop on the 3rd of March. So information will be coming out this week on the status of each master plans and as a precursor for the future, further budget discussions.
Ms. Wicks.
Through you, Mayor, just to add to that. The next quarterly report is actually coming to the next council meeting as well, if that helps.
Thank you. Thank you, Councillor James. Oh, yes. Sorry. Yes, indeed.
Howard Beach master plan, I believe the consultation finished on that in the last week or so, and we're planning on bringing that to council for a final decision in the next couple of months.
Wonderful, thanks, thanks. Thank you. Thank you, Councillor James. Councillor Walker.
My question is in relation to the response to the question I asked last time. We might be on a bit of a loop here. The answer I got to my question around environmental intellectual property was that to assist the Department of State Growth with their High Performance Centre site investigations, council provided a Natural Values Assessment 2023 and an Interpreting Aboriginal Heritage 2019 report. The answer, it didn't quite answer my question, so I'm going to ask it to maybe provide more clarity with the question now. Were those documents provided to the, were they provided as part of our submission? As in, was that information available to the working group to determine when they were looking at the Kingston and Rosney sites? Was that information provided to them after they had awarded Clarence the preferred site option in 2023?
Thank you, Councillor Walker. Ms. Wicks.
No, they were provided after we were awarded...
Preferred developer status. Councillor Walker.
Yeah, thank you, that's very illuminating. Last week, I was listening to the Fontcast, which is Tasmania's biggest political podcast, I understand. I read that somewhere. It was reported that the deputy mayor is intending to run for the upcoming legislative seat of Pembroke. Without actually wanting to go into that in her absence, I guess the point of the matter that I would like some clarification is that whilst you gave some protocols this morning about how you will be working through being a candidate and the mayor, are protocols being worked through for a situation where both the mayor and deputy mayor may be concurrently campaigning in different political spheres during two elections?
Thank you, Councillor Walker. I don't listen to Fontcast, so I'm not aware of what you're saying. I won't enter into any wild speculation in this chamber. If you have a question for the deputy mayor, you can ask her. The reason for the establishment of the protocol for me was, in my view, in discussions with both the Sir Yeo and senior staff, particularly a head of governance, it is best practice, and I was very keen to ensure that we adopt best practice. We're the only council have done that. As you're very aware, there's previous mayors that have run for different offices, there's deputy mayors that have run for different offices over the period of this council. It's up to them as to how they manage any conflicts. It's not up to any one of us. So that's a question for the deputy mayor, if indeed that's what she wants to do. I don't know, you'd have to ask her. Thank you. Councillor Goine.
Recently, I attended the launch of the recreational water quality video from council. I'm just wondering, after last week's fish oil debris washing up on the beaches in other councils, do we know if there's been any water quality testing here in Clarence? And if so, do we have the results?
Thank you. I note that Mr. Brennan's not here tonight. We have to take that on notice, I'm sorry, and come back to you. But I know the Environment Health officers do do that regularly, so obviously with the Doon and Estry Programme. But as to the specifics, I'll have to come back to you.
Following on from that, there have been images circulating social media with mass graves for fish being rumored to have been taken to Copping. As shareholders of the Copping refuse site, do we know that if this is factual? Or are we privy to that information?
Thank you. Acting Sir Yeo.
Through you, sir. We'll take that one on notice.
Thank you, Councillor Goine. Councillor Darko. Councillor Warren. Councillor Chong.
Mr. Mayor, I was asked the other day in relation to one of our community consultation signs that is out on the Belray walking track. There was no end date on the consultation. I've seen some of them do, some of them don't. And I would just like to ask whether it's possible to make sure that we always have the end date for the consultation. People get very frustrated when they still see the signs, but they don't know it's closed.
Thank you. Ms. Wicks.
Through you, Mayor. Yes, that's a good pick-up and oversight. We'll make sure we make amends in the future.
Again, it's good to know that people are doing the reading and looking at the signs. So thank you, thank you, Councillor Chong. So thank you. Thank you, councillor Chong. Well, colleagues, we've now come to the end of item 10. I'll call for a motion to move into closed meeting. Please, a mover. Councillor Goind, seconded. Councillor Warren, thank you. I'll put the motion. All those in favour? Thank you very much. Thank you to those members of the public who attended in person this evening, also to those joining us from home via the live stream. Please join us again in three weeks' time, same place, same time. We look forward to seeing you then.